Good evening, welcome to this meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. My name is Debbie Homewood, I serve as Chair on the Board. The forum is present and the meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as following. Public hearings will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the Board. The Board members may ask questions of the applicant. Once the Board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearing for public comment. All members of the public and tenants who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record. Speak loudly for all to hear and the mic will be live. All questions and comments should be directed through the Chair and I will call upon Board members and/or applicants as needed to respond. The Board will then move into a period of deliberation where we would determine whether or not to close the public hearing and move to vote or continue the public hearing for later dates. Quick reminder, please turn off your cell phones, as I am going to do, because I didn't last time. Please be considerate of Board members and staff and the public. Please turn your phones off, refrain from side conversations as all participants may hear you. Thank you. And First Member on our agenda, request to change the name of FM Global Way to FM Way. Anybody here from FM?
I'm here from Hobbs Brook.
Hi.
Hi Debbie.
Would you like to step up?
Sure. Greg Russo, 16 Plains Street, Medfield, Mass. Senior Project Manager on behalf of Hobbs Brook Real Estate, representing FM.
Okay.
Simple request, the rear road to our Norwood campus is presently FM Global Way. We have gone through a rebranding, we've dropped the global in our name, so it's now FM, so we'd like to see if we could get that name changed to FM Way.
And that's the road that comes in the back?
Off the pleasant, off the back, yes.
And is the gate going to remain?
Everything basically remains as is.
Okay.
It's really just a street name change.
Okay. Simple?
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions?
So can the, you know, police and fire have edited this and they're fine with the name change though? It'll always be known as FM Road, the whole time as the upper.
And the building looks great?
Thank you.
And the trees look even better.
Give us another year, more landscape to come.
Okay. Is Ernie getting his tulips?
No, they're gone. The road are tulips, yellow, but there weren't tulips out there.
Okay, I don't think we have any questions? We need to, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Next up is 315 Washington Street, the Coakley Middle School that is continued from 922 and site plan modification. And you are from?
Anissa Ellis from Perplex.
It's all you.
Okay, I sent over packet, I sent it by email, I see you have it in hard copy as well. On the cover, there is a spreadsheet of all the changes that have been made to date. The ones that are in gray are ones that I presented previously, so I wasn't going to go through those if that's all right with this group, and we'll just go through the new ones.
Okay. The new ones are the ones in white?
In white, yeah.
Okay.
So on the second page, item number 17 was a request to add a green drainage catch basin and the Building Committee voted that one down, they're keeping that area as just a grass area and not adding any drainage to it.
Excuse me, we can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Is that, is that better?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
The next item is for a change to the south parking lot, we added some ADA parking spaces. That's the one by the Little League Field, so they're close to the Little League Field.
Okay.
The next one is the rear drive timber guard rail, walking path curbing. So as of today, the Building Committee has voted to move forward with the guard rail and the granite curbing that goes around the driveway at the back of the school. And we're still working through details for the walking path that's down at the field level.
Okay, quick question.
Yes.
I talked to Sarah today, and is that where the grading's going to be? And do you know how deep the grading is? Am I using the right expression?
How steep it is?
Steep, thank you.
I don't, but Gary and Stephanie from LKB, they're the civil engineers, they might be able to answer that, they're online. I don't have that in my notes in front of me. It varies a little bit from the corner of like the softball field over to where the concession stand is, it gets a little bit higher over by the concession stand.
So on the grade, would one of those people be able to answer us? Because we've had this issue in front of the Planning Board before where we had a pitch and it washed out, it was a...
So we did have an independent third party look at that as well, and they provided a report, I don't know, I'm pretty sure Gary got a copy of it, I don't know if Sarah he received a copy of it, but they said that they don't foresee any issues with washout with the grade. Once it's stabilized, it should get grass on it, and might already actually be seeded at this point. Originally it called for plantings and there was a little bit of back and forth, and I, at this point, it's just grass that's going along that slope.
So there's no plantings going on that keep it from washing out?
There is not at this time. There's been a lot of back and forth between, I think the DPW wanted grass and the facilities wanted plantings and everything kind of got put on hold to it, at this point it's just grass.
Is there a point, would one of these people be able to tell me, is there a point where the grade is a certain amount that it needs to be stabilized with something other than grass? Is that an engineering thing? Like if it's more than a 30 degree, 40 degree, whatever that number is? Is there a point?
There probably is, but I don't believe that we've reached that point for that grade in the back there.
Okay.
Gary, we can't hear you, I see you talking, but...
Joe? Sorry. Typically, we can go to about a 2.5 to 1, with vegetated slopes and some soil stabilization. Standard is 3 to 1, but again, slope stabilization, that's when you do 2.5 to 1.
Could you explain to me what 2.5 to 1 is?
Sorry.
That's all right.
We repeat horizontal to 1 foot vertical.
Thank you.
So probably a 33.3% slope.
And what are we at?
We're at a 33% slope.
Who's talking?
Stephanie.
Okay.
Stephanie from LKB.
So in your opinion, we don't need any use or anything to keep it from sliding down into the sliding?
No.
No?
No, it's mobile.
Okay, I've asked. Joe's got a question.
Yes.
The walking path is at...
Do you want this? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
The walking path is at field level?
Yeah, that's the plan, is to keep it at field level.
And I know that they had different stations among some of these...
Oh, the workout equipment?
That's not near that side at all, is it?
It's on the other side.
Right.
So it's still in talks, they've surveyed it and they might shift the field and it might shift the path that's kind of on the far side closer to the brook possibly, to make room for the path at the toe of the slope. So that, that whole part of it is still, there's still a lot of discussions happening about how to make it work, but the intent is to put that path back.
Okay, no, I was just curious, I wouldn't think you would want the stations on that side?
No, they're on the other side.
At all?
I believe there's...
Because someone could be...
Yeah.
Running, playing and run into it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, you're on to 20.
Yes, sorry. 20 is in the front of the school, in front of the student dining commons where it added play area. And it is a paved area that's a half basketball court, it has some sensory items. There is an existing, we call it the peanut, it's like a seating area, and there's going to be some canopies for some shade over that. And that work is currently ongoing, it's not complete yet. The next one is minor asphalt pads around the fire hydrants. So all the fire hydrants have like a little cane can around them of asphalt just for ease of use, that was requested by the Fire Department, that's also complete. Item 23, we added a fence at the Serpentine Walk up to the Little League. So from the parking lot, there is a new path that leads up to the Little League Fields, and we added a fence just, it was required due to the height of the, because it's on a little retaining wall, so we added a fence so that, for safety.
Okay.
The next item, 24, is the compactor and dumpster change, and this was required to make space for the trash compactors, they have certain clearances. So the recycling dumpster was just moved just kind of adjacent to that location, still within the loading docks, just a slightly different location, and that's also complete. Number 25 is the traffic signage ad. This is ongoing, a lot of the new signs have been added. There is a second round of signs, generally no parking signs that are going to be added around the rear driveway. And there were a couple of stop signs that were installed that were part of the, so previously the intent was to drive the opposite way around the back of the school, so the stop signs are facing the wrong way, but in discussions with the school, they want all the traffic to flow the same way, buses, parents, so those will be removed and installed.
Right, a quick question is, I was up a couple weeks ago.
Yes.
You only go around one way?
Yes.
So, right, so the stop sign is...
Is facing, it's in the wrong spot, so it's going to be relocated.
Okay. And when is that going to be done?
Hopefully this week. I know that they installed most of the new signs, or the first round of new signs on Friday, so I haven't been back there to pay attention if that was...
And I'm sorry, I'm going to back up to 24. The compactor and the dumpster?
Yes.
Are they kind of sitting there? Are they going to be enclosed in anything?
They are, the compactors are definitely enclosed, I believe the dumpsters aren't closed as well. I can double check that though, I'm sending you now.
Okay.
They're, they're fencing around them.
I'm sorry?
Yep. They're fencing around all dumpsters and the compactors to a port.
Okay. All right. 26.
Plantings changed to native species, this was a request from the Planning Board and that was approved by the Building Committee. Plantings are ongoing at this time, around, this is mostly around kind of the north end of the building where the generator is and then around where the new fields are going, so a lot of those plantings are ongoing right now.
Okay, quick question on planting.
Yes.
I get all the time that we've missed planting season, we'll do it next year. Are you going to get all the plantings in before the season's over, do you think?
I think that they will, and we do have kind of provisions in place to come back and do anything that we weren't able to get in this year, in the spring, next spring.
So you'll mark that on the thing, this is what's done and next year we're going to...
Yep, we can definitely do that.
Just to alleviate some paperwork. When do you think planting season ends?
That is great, I would say the end of October, but the civil team would know better than I do.
Civil team, when do you think planting season ends?
End of October. So for some species, maybe mid-October. I've seen it go both September 1st, October 15th, and September 15th to October 31st.
Okay.
There's a landscape architect who comes out monthly and does a report, so they would be the ones who would note on their report what is done and what isn't done, so we can get that...
I ask because we kind of run into this on every single thing.
Yes, understood.
Thank you. 27.
27 is, there's, we added a guard rail at the sidewalk, so on the south entrance. There is a retaining wall where the field ends, so there's a retaining wall there and there's a sidewalk that goes from Washington Street up to the school, and we added a guard rail, just for safety reasons, because there is that retaining wall that leads into the field, it's like three or four feet high, I don't remember exactly. So we added that for safety. That has not been installed yet, they're still working on that.
South entrance is the first entrance into the school as you come up Washington?
No, the other one.
The exit?
The exit, yes.
Okay.
28, the Washington Street crosswalk changes. So it was brought to our attention that the existing crosswalks from the other side of Washington Street to cross over to the side where the school is did not line up with our, with the new ramps and warning tracks, so we kind of refigured, reconfigured that so that everything matches, so that if you're crossing Washington Street to get to the school, you will use the crosswalk and it will lead you right into a ramp so you can get up onto the sidewalk.
Okay.
The next one is relocation of three trees that were in the south parking lot that were in conflict with security cameras, so that work is complete. The next one is fire lane striping and language. This is for the driveway around the rear of the building, the striping is in, the language, I don't believe is complete yet, that is ongoing work. And then the last one is, we added an additional ADA parking space in the north parking lot, which is the line closest to the tennis courts. We added one additional ADA parking space.
Okay. Anything from the Board?
Ernie?
Ernie?
Thanks, Chairman. Just a quick question, came to my attention, there was a, if you could know better, on one of the football fields, goalposts are kind of close to the parking lot, so if we have one of our great young field goal kickers, he could...
Is this for the new field?
For the new field?
Yes.
He could kick it into the parking lot? Is there talk of a net or something?
There is, 20 feet nets going on both end zones.
So that's, that's going up?
Yes. It hasn't been, it hasn't been installed yet, but it's part of the plan.
But it's part of the plan, so, okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Can I open this up to the public?
This is just site plan review.
Okay. All right. But I can, it's okay if I, anybody in the audience have a question?
I don't care, I was just curious about the native planting. Is there a list of what you're putting in? And, actually, three questions. Is there a list of what you're putting in? Are you getting the plants from local?
Speak loud.
Are you getting the plants from local people, because that's a growing thing that's happening in Norwood, native plant sales and stuff, so I was, I'm just wondering if you were getting the plants from local growers and local sales people? And are you doing any native seed?
What? Oh, name and address, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Jim Kirkher, 128 Hill Street in Norwood. So, my three, did everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yeah? Oh, okay.
There is a list of native plantings, it is on the paperwork, which...
And he can get that on the website, right? Can he get this?
Yes, or you can contact the office, we can send you the most recent landscaping plan that has the full planting listed.
I believe it has the listing of the grasses as well, I don't know what hit their native off the top of my head. And as far as nurseries, I don't know which nursery they are purchasing from, but I know they generally go there and select which ones they want to make sure that they're healthy. I can try and find out though, and I can report back.
Okay, thank you. And the Planning Department would know and you could call the Planning Department.
Hello, thank you.
Gentleman on the way back was next.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
St. Goddely, 69 Willow Street, District 7. That path, now is that going to be on top of the street side or is it going to be down below on field?
The attendance first be down below on field.
So how much real estate do you take in the field?
It's, I believe it's about five feet, and so right now they're looking at possibly shifting the football field and there's...
A ball field?
Yes.
You have to shift ball field?
Yes, yep. So like I said, that's not, it hasn't been finalized yet, there's been a lot of talk. We've looked at it both ways.
Right now, you know, for that visiting side, there's probably about three feet.
Is that the slope side that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you technically need 20 feet from the, you know, the outside of the sideline, so that's a lot of movement on those fields.
Yeah.
I know down the deep side?
Yes.
It's a drop off.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a drainage kind of, yeah. We, I can't speak to it as well as my colleagues have been kind of working on that, but we are, we've been monitoring with the DPW, with the Building Inspector, with the Rec Department, and Rick Morrison, who's kind of been our liaison with all of those sources.
So why couldn't they do that, that, just that little trail there? Put a granite curb up in the road and put a knee wall and keep it the street, and then drop it around, loop it around?
We looked at that as well, and you have to put a retaining wall because of the roads...
Knee wall, yeah.
Yeah. So we've kind of looked at it a bunch of different ways, so...
I think that would be the best way to go.
Yeah. Yeah. Like I said, there's probably like four...
People, you're talking to trails.
Yeah.
Put it up, you've got plenty of room out here for trails, that's a parking lot.
Yeah.
You know, with ongoing traffic and, you know, gigs going on. Obviously, you'll have to put a fence down there.
Yeah.
On the field, so, I mean, for that little stretch, it seems like an awful lot of work, but...
I agree, it's a lot of work for...
Yeah, it is, no, it is.
That's the one that the DPW was asking for, correct?
Yes.
That's the one that the DPW asked for, that walkway that kind of used to be there? So people could walk and not go on the field and walk around, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, up top. Okay. Anything else?
Is there any talk about putting some bleachers down there at all, on the new field?
There is not, that, there are a lot of reasons why not. Generally, if you have bleachers, then it turns into a plumbing code issue, you need a, it's very, very expensive, so at the beginning of the project, we decided not to, not to pursue that.
The portable bleachers, a couple, that, we've had it down there before, so...
Yeah, I can bring it up, I guess that Mr. Lewis and, yeah, it's their decision, but I will definitely let them know that.
I mean, because like...
There was a request.
It's a beautiful complex down there, so if we're going to do it, let's do it right and make it complete.
Yeah, yeah, I'll definitely pass that along, I'll meet you in Norwood.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yep, you.
Cheryl Doyle, 12 Center Street, District 6. I have a question, you mentioned the fencing, is that the fencing that, like, here's the front of the school and there's a field here?
Yes.
And then there's some shrubs up top?
Yes.
And then there's a fence, is that the fence you were talking about?
No, there's, like, where the end zones are of the football field, there's, and there's a fence along the entire retaining wall, so anywhere where there's a retaining wall, there'll be a fence.
Okay, I have a question on the fencing, on the retaining wall. I noticed there's no top bottom rail, so the only thing you have are the link ties to the posts?
Yeah.
And over time, it'll start sagging down, so the kids will be able to cut through off of Washington Street and come in this direction?
Okay.
And they might decide to be superheroes and dive over. So I was wondering, do they plan on putting like a top and bottom rail just for integrity of the fencing?
I would have to check the specs. Gary or Stephanie, I don't know if you have those for the plans?
Yeah, because right now, it looks like temporary fencing, so it kind of was, not to be offensive, it looks choosy, like the corner was cut to do temporary fencing up there, when it should have top bottom rail to hold the chain link itself in place over time.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely look into it and I'll get back to Sarah. But I just want to make sure though, you're talking about the fence that's not like the ten, the eight foot tall panels of temporary fence that are like included in the site, right?
No.
The chain link, you're talking about the chain link.
So here's the school, here's the front of it, here's the field?
Yeah.
And then you have, here's the retaining wall?
Yeah.
And all the shrubs, behind the shrub, there's a chain link.
Yeah.
But it's only in place by posts, you know, top bottom rails.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into it.
Which is really strange not to have the rail.
Well, it's also twice as expensive.
Yeah. I honestly, I don't know, last time I had a...
I have to ask, but I'd rather the town spend the extra money with that leftover money that they have, I would rather than put the rails in?
Yep.
Than a child diving off of that retaining wall.
All right, good point. And who can she ask, Sarah? Who can she follow up with?
With the fence there?
Yeah.
I mean, contacts on the middle school building committee, I think would be appropriate.
All right, thank you.
There is an email address.
There is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Real quick, and then I'm going to get yelled at because...
Susan Davis, District 32.
Speak up or come to the front, which would you prefer?
I just have a problem with people taking away catch bases because it is upper level and...
You got to speak louder because even I can't hear you.
I have a problem, can you hear me?
The big mic, yep.
Have a problem with people taking away catch bases, especially upper level to South Norwood. I know it's the school, I know there's a lot of grass there, but why have you taken the catch basin away?
We, we didn't take one away, there was a request to add green drainage, so like the drainage plan was already complete and we had come back to Planning Board with all these changes, and then they had a few requests back to the project.
They did a green, how many green drains did we do?
Oh, I don't know the quantity off the top of my head.
Right, but we switched them.
But there are, you know, green drainage areas that were in the plan originally. This was a request to add another one, just because I think if a project was being permitted now, it sounds like there are stricter rules or requests for more green drainage and that area...
As long as it's drainage, I mean...
There's, there's what the city requires and then we did green, but again, this is like a couple years ago, are we on this for a couple of years?
Yeah.
So, I don't think we took away any, I don't think we took away anything, I mean, it's right on the brook, it's right, again, the engineers...
Yeah, but nothing was removed, it was a request to add more, and we did not have that.
Okay, any extra money? I would rather like to see it be paying off at death.
I don't think, I don't think we have anything to say about that, but...
Can you pass that along as well?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Two more quick ones, because you asked good questions, but I, we got to move on.
Very quickly, Doug Jasset, 22 Andrews Street, District 7. I'd just like to reiterate the importance of a couple of small bleachers. Some of us are getting older, we have sore hips and knees and standing up for an hour and a half.
Oh, speak for yourself.
It's difficult, but in addition to watching the game, gives the cheerleaders a captive audience to perform their hard work in front of an audience, so I think that would be a great idea.
I agree, but that's, who would they talk to about, that's an extra expense, what we have to go to?
Facilities.
Facilities.
School building.
So make your...
We're really reviewing the drainage.
Right, we're reviewing this, I know, I know I shouldn't be letting you have your head, but they're good questions, so...
School building assist, the school building committee.
Paul? School building committee.
And facilities, yep.
We're just, we just get to do this boring stuff, you can go ask for bleachers from them, which I think is a great idea. Okay, one last, I promise, the last one.
Steve Kenechi, District 4, Fleghammer Road. Are these site plan modifications, are these part of the leftover money from the school or are these looking to be funded?
No, I'm, no, is, am I correct on that? Oh, yep, sorry. This has been continued for what, six months?
So the Planning Board's role here is to review the site plan and make sure that the plans meet the town's requirements for really impact, so you're looking at drainage and stormwater management design, you're looking at the roadway, the curbing, circulation on and off the site. We're reviewing these plans to make sure that they meet those standards. The Planning Board's job is not necessarily to find funding for projects, that's what the project developer side is, so on a private project, that's the development team, and on the publicly funded project for a school property, that's the middle school building committee. So the Planning Board suggests changes to these, these site plans to make sure that what's being proposed is in compliance with our standards, that it's safe, that it doesn't, you know, make the flooding off the site worse, right? Those are the types of changes that it suggests. It's up to the project proponent, whether that's a private developer or in this case the middle school building committee, to work that into the budget to figure out how to make it happen. And if they need to request, you know, some sort of an alternate proposal to meet the same goal, then they can come back to the Planning Board and ask for that. But the funding and the design, we're focused on the design here with this board. The funding has to be worked out from the building committee at another time.
Well, I guess my question is kind of like before that, like, is this, is this the end, wrapping up the school, and these are extra projects that needed to be done in order to do that, or are these new projects that are on the table?
No.
Very often, what we see with larger projects like this, is that by necessity, the design of a project has to involve, once the crew gets started and they realize what the actual conditions on the ground are, and it's not uncommon at all for a project of this scale to return and say, you know, we need to tweak this here and there, and we need to make some changes. We need to make sure that they do that so that the plan we have on record is the one that the Planning Board approved. So these aren't new ideas necessarily, this is, you know, we've continued to talk about it as a team and, you know, we, we think that this is the best way to improve circulation around the rear of the site. That is the case with this rear pathway, that was a discussion for a long time. This board had actually requested that walking path around the back field to improve access to that field and provide a safe place for pedestrians to walk. It wasn't something that could be included in the design, in the budget at the time, and so the board, you know, agreed to something that was an alternate proposal that didn't feel was as sufficient to meet that standard. And so the board, you know, agreed to something that was an alternate proposal that didn't feel was as sufficient to meet that standard. Um, the middle, middle school building committee was able to make, uh, that work. And so that was one, I'm just giving an example. That was one of the components that it returned to the planning board requesting the modification for was to make sure the plans showed that design. Does that make sense?
So reading between the lines of what you just said, cause that was a mouthful, will these plans be going to town meeting for funding?
No, they'll be funded by the budget or the place for, for the middle school.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
And again, I'm apologizing to the board, but I think all questions are good questions. I know it's out of our, out of our scope, but... You're killing me. You're killing me. Will you make it, will you make it quick? I said last one. See, I lied.
This is why we can't have these things.
I know. That's why we can't have nice things.
My question, I just have a quick question. From the forward window of the school to the left, the forming arts with the... Why is that all asphalt? Why isn't that concrete there?
Are you, are you talking about the road or...
Talking about the sidewalk, the sidewalk, the sidewalk. It's asphalt.
It's cheaper.
Yeah, I think it...
You're going free.
There's concrete in the front of the building. Um, and I think at the time when we were putting the project out to bid, some, uh, we were over budget, so some things got changed. And I know as part of, it was probably one of these earlier ones, we changed a lot of that back to concrete. A lot of sidewalks that were changed to asphalt. And that was just a decision that was made by the building committee. How much they wanted to add back is concrete versus asphalt.
So it's staying asphalt?
Yes.
What, we, maybe we can ask Gary. Is the difference in asphalt and concrete triple?
I don't know if it's triple, but there is a significant difference in cost between concrete and asphalt. I, I wanna be careful not to give any, any price.
Right. I've asked that question also because I'm not an asphalt fan, but it's way more expensive. So, okay.
Same thing that we see with granite curving versus concrete curving versus asphalt curving. There's basically three tiers of cost. Um, and as granite curb being the most, concrete curb being middle, and asphalt curb being the lowest cost.
Okay. Thank you. Okay? You think that's it? Do you want, you don't wanna continue? You wanna, just, they're gonna come back to you with the, the weighted ones? And we're gonna be comfortable that these are all getting done? Cause it's the school, like we're gonna say no.
Yeah.
Mike.
Yes. Oh, Mike again?
If it helps at all, I know they've all gone through the building committee.
I understand that. And I, you know, it's, it's not the planning board's purview, but I, I think all questions are good.
All of the changes that Vanessa described are reflected on the revised plans that were submitted. Um, so if you're satisfied with those changes that were summarized in the table, um, you can be assured that those are now included in the revised site plan that was provided to the board. And that can be improved.
Okay. Can I put in that we, can I put in the condition that we look again at the, at the slope where it's whatever Gary said, one five? In case we need more stabilization with low hanging bushes, so it's not running off? We can take a look at it? Gary?
Uh, if there were, if there are any concerns with the stabilization there, which again, the, the max slope is that three to one, is thirty-three point three percent. It's, it's an industry standard for vegetated slope. Um, rather than a shrub, if there was a concern, I would go with a seed mix that has deeper, like a deeper root base, um, which can be used in some applications, not needed here. Uh, but that would be, that would be one of the steps in a, if it was a steeper slope that was going to remain vegetated.
I can also forward you the report that we received from the third group.
There's the report and then there's real life, but okay. I'm not gonna get anywhere with it. I have a labor. Okay. Um, so do we have to close this?
It's not a public appearance. You just need to take a look.
Okay. You, are you all set?
Yes.
Sarah, are you all set?
Um, so I have requested, uh, recommended two conditions. Um, both it sounds like are being incorporated by the team, um, in changes, but they are not, um, on the plans anywhere. One was respective to that netting behind the, the goalposts. Um, again, it's, I don't think it's on the...
That is, that's on the, um, landscape plans. It's on the landscape. Yes.
Netting installed behind goalposts, field protects sidewalks and roadways from interference. Installation shall occur before field is placed into use or sixty days from the date of this hearing.
Yeah, it's, it's on the landscape. I think it's the hardscape plans. If you look at those, um, there's broken up into the different sections. But if you look at them on for the field, uh, on the north side by the tennis courts, it's a fence with, uh, um, netting. And on the other side, it's just a closure netting.
I would recommend that the board consider requesting the addition of a note about timing relative to their installation, um, that they be installed prior to first use of the field.
And when is that gonna be? Not, not this season, right?
Not now, likely this spring.
In the spring?
Yeah.
So you wanna put a date? Because on the signage, um, we'd like, within fifteen days of the date of this hearing, the signage to be...
There was a plan that was actually issued, um, this afternoon with the added no parking signs that were requested, so...
Okay.
I would think within fifteen days, we, you know, no parking signs could be installed.
And that's up to Gary to look at? So netting should be installed. We wanna put in the condition before the season opens? But that's spring?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's gonna go in this fall, so it's up to you. It's, doesn't really...
I think that's where the field's placed into use.
Okay.
That's up, that's the discretion of the board.
And that's up to Gary to look at that too? Or anybody that's up there can call? Okay. So we're using the two conditions, the netting and the, um, signage? And fifteen days for the sign and before the field put into use as the two conditions? Is there a motion, gentlemen?
So moved.
Joe?
Second.
Second. By Rob? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, sixty-one Endicott Street. And I believe that would be Mr. Hearn.
I was correct, Madam Chair.
Walk the path, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the planning board, David Hearn Jr. of Gallimard Cabral, thirty Walpole Street. On behalf of the applicant, the Norwood Commerce Center Limited partnership. Uh, we were before you, um, two weeks ago and had a, I think, a good discussion and, um, provided you with updates on what we've been doing with respect to this project. Um, subsequent to that meeting, um, we have made some updates to the plans and, uh, we'll, uh, discuss those with you. I wanna introduce the team members who are here this evening. Kevin Holker, uh, in the same crowd as we had the last time. Kevin Holker, who was, uh, uh, in the property management team. Natalie David, also in the property management team. Uh, Michael Radnor of High Point Engineering, who has done our landscaping. He's hiding behind the lectern. And, uh, uh, and remotely appearing is Susan Sprout of McKenzie Engineering, who are engineers on the project. Um, so we've made some updates to plans. They were filed with the, uh, planning department and I believe have been distributed to you. I let Susan, uh, discuss the plans, the, the changes to the civil plans. And Michael can discuss any updates to the, um, landscaping. Uh, I do want to note a couple of things. There were two memoranda that I submitted to the board. One is dated September thirtieth, the other October first. I hope you have those. If you don't, I have, uh, extra copies, um, if you want them. Uh, they dealt with the questions that were raised. Um, the September thirtieth memorandum deals with, uh, questions relating to the proposed uses that we're asking relief for under the major project special permit application. And it lays out the square footage for which we are asking permission or approval by special permit for certain categories of uses. Um, retail uses, studios, offices and service establishments, public assembly, uh, food processing. And I made a note that, uh, in that, that the, for warehouse and storage units, we don't need relief cause those are already allowed, as a matter of fact, within the manufacturing district. The others are the types of uses that we are proposing, um, be allowed by special permit so that individual tenants will not be required to go to the zoning board if they seek to, uh, rent property here. Now, the numbers that we're giving, we're showing roughly, uh, the current areas of use, uh, in one column. And the other column is the proposed maximum area. Uh, this is intended, not intended rather, to limit, uh, the total is not supposed to be, um, equal to the total square footage available, uh, rented and unrented in the Commerce Center, which is about two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. We have proposed this in a manner that will allow flexibility so that as changes occur in the types of tenants that we might have, as needs change, um, we have the flexibility. So long, we can only rent the space we have. But this is, uh, these, uh, totals plus the warehouse and storage areas, um, could exceed two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. But cannot go by category, cannot exceed the categories that we've laid out here. Retail, fifty thousand square feet. Uh, they're all an increase of about twenty thousand square feet from what we presently have. Studios, offices and service establishments, a maximum of a hundred and ten thousand square feet. Public assembly, maximum forty thousand square feet. Food processing, a maximum of twenty thousand square feet. We have none there at the moment, but we could in the future. So that was the first memo, uh, in terms of uses, um, except for the second, uh, comment, which is that there are presently and have been for some time, three tenants who engaged in businesses related to either dog training or dog daycare or a combination of those. And those, um, are uses that formerly were not allowed by special permit. But when we amended the bylaw last year, those are, uh, they can be allowed by special permit in the zoning, in this district based upon the recent changes to the zoning bylaws. Uh, we're asking that those existing uses, not any increase in those uses, not any changes in those uses, but that those existing uses, some of which have been there, and Kevin can probably answer this better than I, for a number of years, uh, also be authorized under the major project special permit.
Mr. Hearn, may I, where do those fall? In the studio and offices, retail, public?
None of the above, really. They're not in the buildings.
Oh, they're separate buildings. Okay.
So the buildings, when we talk about the square footage, we're talking about two hundred and sixty thousand square feet total of the various buildings. They are...
Separate standalone buildings.
So they're, they're out back.
Right. I understand that, but they're not included in the two hundred?
Not included in the totals, no.
Okay.
They're, they're by themselves, really.
Okay.
And so, um, whether they are in some way grandfathered or protected by statutes of limitations or anything like that, we thought it would be appropriate to call them out and ask for the board to approve those. Um, I understand that you have a memo from the planning department that, uh, recommends a different, uh, course of action. But, um, we are, uh, those are existing uses. They are not anything new. They're not anything that we're proposing to change. And certainly if there were changes, uh, it would make sense for them to go back to the zoning board. But, um, and, uh, the, the rec, we would disagree with the recommendation that they be excluded from the permit. They're already there. So there, there, no surprises there, um, in the future. If there were changes, they would have to go back to, for a special permit review with the zoning board. And we would, uh, we're not asking that those be included in the type of uses that we can move around within the property. We're, we're just seeking to confirm that they can stay where they are now and where they have been for a number of years. Um, so that's, that's one point, uh, that's mentioned in, uh, the September thirtieth memorandum. Uh, the other memorandum, which was October first, um, speaks to some parking issues. Um, and it was pointed out by the department that I think we proposed, and I think it was a typographical error in the, in the table of, the parking table on the plans, nineteen spaces for places of public assembly. Um, I went back and looked at that after the, uh, staff at the planning department had made some comments about it. And, um, uh, we believe that those uses that are places of public assembly, fallout shelter, the admin event space and a, uh, small church that rents some space at the Commerce Center, based on their allowed occupancy limits, um, and the application of the bylaws provisions would require eighty-one parking spaces. So we'd substitute eighty-one for nineteen in that table. Doesn't really change the total of what we're providing, uh, and I'm gonna speak to that in a moment. But, um, that's what a calculation under the bylaw would require based on occupancy for places of public assembly. Uh, Hometown Arcade, I noted, is actually a place of, uh, commercial indoor recreation. I think they're already included in our calculations for that type of category. Um, and, uh, I wanna note, and I think we've shown on the plans, the revised plans that were submitted last week, that the, um, uh, number of spaces that we are proposing has been reduced from four hundred and fifty to four hundred and thirty-eight. The twelve spaces that have been removed were removed, um, because the fire department had raised questions about, uh, the ability of their trucks, particularly the larger trucks, to move around this, the, um, site, uh, easily without any hindrance. And they suggested these spaces be removed. Uh, originally, uh, they had said, well, we can do a test after this project is approved. We'll do a test later after you do your construction and see how it works out. And whether, um, then you'd have to come back and get approval for changes from the site plan. Uh, we decided to go, just go ahead and take those spaces up. We called that out to you in the memo. They are removed on the, um, on the actual plans. We still think the four hundred and thirty-eight spaces, based upon the information we've given you. And the last time we were here, we were, um, I think we gave you photos that were, uh, that showed the uses of the, the parking areas at different times, at different days, um, to show you that we haven't had an overflow. We think the number of spaces we are providing isn't more than adequate for the uses. Keep in mind, uses occur at different times of day and different days of the week. So, um, that, uh, is really what we, uh, what the two memos were about. Um, and, uh, I wanted to point that out. There's one other thing that I'm not sure is in any of the memos, but I think we had discussed it previously. And that is that the, um, uh, some of the parking spaces would be required to have a depth of eighteen and a half feet. And we're proposing eighteen feet for some of the parking spaces. Um, and, and I think Susan can speak to that. But I had a note, uh, that, uh, that's something I wanna make sure that we, um, include in any relief that you might be inclined to grant, uh, to authorize the shorter parking spaces. And if we, you know, if it's needed for, if, if you need more specificity, I think Susan or Kevin can point out exactly where we need that. The, um, conditions that have been proposed, um, in the memo that, uh, the planning department, um, gave you dated October first, um, there are conditions, um, six, seven and eight that I think are okay. Six was a little bit of a surprise, I think, but has to do with ballards in front of the buildings. Um, uh, buildings twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, and the condition that is proposed is, is that design and layout, um, be approved by the building commissioner and the community development director prior to commencement of work. So that would be a after decision, fine tuning with us working with, uh, Gary Pelletier and Sarah Dixon to, uh, figure out what ballards might be necessary for pedestrian, um, protection. Uh, there's also, I think, I just wanna clarify this, uh, there was reference to a, um, uh, a handicapped curb cut up by Endicott Street. And, uh, I think we know where that is.
Number eight? Is that the one you're going?
I'm looking for it here.
Endicott Street sidewalk where it meets the exit road around the pond.
One, at, at one point, that's, that belongs to the condo. Uh, you're referring to the one on our side of the street. Is that what they're talking, okay?
Kevin, we're clear on that, yeah?
Yeah, we can, we can take care of that then. So that was, um, we, I just wanna be clear. We're not doing anything on the condo side. Okay? Um, so that's, uh, those are really my remarks here, but I would, uh, Susan may have some comments about how the plans have changed or the updates we made, uh, for your, um, based on the discussion we had with you a couple of weeks ago. And, um, and I know Mr. Patrick House wasn't here the last time, but I'm assuming he's done with his work on the Mullen rule.
Madam Chair, I just wanna bring that up. I, I was gonna bring it up in a while. I have reviewed the video and have signed the affidavit, so, uh, I've met the requirements of the Mullen rule. If that's okay with...
It's fine with us. It's just, uh...
Party is intimate with Linsland Market. You know it up there.
What's that? What's that?
You go up there a lot. Who is that?
To the Commerce Center?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. And just dotting i's and crossing t's, Adam Chair.
Got it.
That's what we do. So I don't know, Sue Spratt is here, and she can speak to some of the updates to the plans, as our engineer. And Michael Radner's here to speak to any updates to the landscaping, and then we're happy to take questions and comments and so forth from the board.
Well, Sue, Ms. Spratt, go first.
Yep, I'm here. Sue Spratt from McKenzie Engineering. Sarah, do you want me to share the screen, or do you, can you bring up the revised plans?
I can bring up the plans.
Thank you. You can just go to sheet, C8, that will show the updates, please.
Can you see that, Sue?
Yep, I can see that. If you could just, the top part, yep, that's fine. Pretty much, the changes were made at the, per the memo provided by the Planning Department. The first part is up at the intersection with Endicott Street. We're providing the recommended crosswalk and stop bar and revised upgraded ADA handicap accessible ramp at the intersection with the sidewalk. Also, at the other comment was to provide a buffer landscape strip along Endicott Street, along the property line, which we have shown on this plan, and Michael Radner can get into the landscaping requirements of it. Pretty much, the only other update on this plan, as you can see in blue, sorry, not blue, pink hats, are we needed to show snow storage locations that are located at various locations throughout the site, none of which are along Hawes Brook. Per the conservation order of conditions, we had to be 50 feet away from Hawes Brook for any snow storage areas. It's primarily, the biggest snow storage area is the area up against the cap, the cap site, if you look at the parking lot up to the right, above, next to Building 23, that parking lot to the right, we have a snow storage area up along the existing white fence that would during, this is like, obviously, heavy snowfall event, it would take up one, two, three, four, five parking spaces.
Is that the hot tank?
Yep.
Okay.
For our snow storage. Other areas throughout the site do not entail taking any parking spaces for snow storage. That's the only parking lot that we need to incorporate, since from what we've been told, that where they have historically used for snow storage is the area up against the white fence. So we're showing that same location. Other changes of the plan are adding the accessible handicap spots behind Buildings 44 and 45. You can see the two little blue hatched areas here. Those are for van, van accessible spaces. The other change we made was over here at Building 46, there is an existing handicap, metal handicap ramp, but there was not any strapping for a van accessible, so we've added that five-foot hatch area for van accessibility. The same for this trailer, the K-9 Training School, we've added an accessible five-foot hatch area for a van. And we've removed the spaces recommended by the Fire Department, that Attorney Hearn had discussed. This area here, we've removed some parking, one space, one space here, spaces within here, along this area behind Building 27, we were asked to remove. And by providing the landscape area here along the property line with Endicott Street, we also had to remove, I believe, two spaces. But also, as Attorney Hearn had said, we have removed 12 spaces that were recommended between the Fire Department and the Planning Board.
Can I ask you, you're saying here, but she's not moving a mouse, right? I'm just supposed to follow this? Okay.
Well, would you add it again, please?
You're not moving anything, I'm just supposed to be following you where you're going?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. I thought maybe I was missing the mouse or something. Okay.
No, no, that was, I'm just trying, I was trying to just say where things were.
I understand. So the spaces you removed are at the end of the building where you take a right, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we don't do any snow storage on top of that cap? Kevin, is that, that cap space, you don't dump any snow on that?
Up to the fence, not on the cap.
Up to the fence.
All right.
Not on top of the cap, no.
Okay.
And not within any areas that have subsurface infiltration systems, not within any of the area that's used for the compensatory storage, and nowhere within 50 feet of Hawes Brook.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin, is he trying to follow where she's going? Yes, sir.
My turn.
Your turn.
Would you mind opening the landscape package? So, Michael Radner with High Point Engineering. I'll just take you briefly through the changes in the landscape. This is the area that we're calling Parking Lot A, which is at that top-left corner of the site. The landscape plan actually has not changed. What's changed on this, if you zoom out a little bit, is that we've added the landscape tables to each of these plans. Hopefully, that makes it a lot clearer what we've provided on here. It's a tricky thing, this technology.
It's a big plan, this kind of stuff.
Yeah, our plans are heavy on graphics, so they take a little, a little bit of colors.
Okay, so what do you want to write?
So to the right, we added the...
To the right on the screen, correct?
Yep. We added the table that shows our calculations per your, per your bylaws. I will say that we had, Ms. Dixon helped us, because we had a slight miscalculation in our tree and truck calculations, and she sent us some example plans of how we should calculate this, and actually improved our numbers, lowered the amount of impervious surface that we have, so our percentage of, our percentage of landscape went up, but the plan didn't change. I'll just say that. So if you go to the next plan, next sheet. So this area, we're calling Parking Lot B. If you scroll it up a little bit, just a tiny bit there, we have, oh no, I'm sorry, we're still on the same sheet.
It's Hawes Brook there on the left, correct? Where the dotted outlines are?
Correct.
Okay.
There we go. Keep going, next sheet. That one's over there, keep going. There we go. Those three or four end islands and mid islands, sort of the top end of the parking lot, we actually added trees to those islands, so we've added four trees to this plan, which raises our, our count as well. And if you go to the next sheet, we've added a parking lot on the left, I think we had two trees on that plan, we added four more to go around the parking lot. Even though we're under 30 parking spaces there, we wanted to provide some shade also on that parking lot and add to the landscape.
I'm sure the caliper of the trees is on the plan, right?
The caliper of the trees is, there's a plant schedule that has all the, meets your, I think it exceeds your size requirement.
Over three, anybody could exceed three. Do you know, sir?
We're three and a half to four, on all the shady trees.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. And so the area at the top right, that's Endicott Street, that's running diagonally up and down the page, so those are the, that's the landscape island that we've added to the plan. Right now, it's just, it's asphalt, it's just open asphalt all the way through from the parking lot to the street. So we created a, put a new raised island with curving there along the Endicott Street, added all of that landscape space there. And then the five trees on the right are the trees that were requested by the Conservation Commission as a replacement.
And the new blacktop, is any of it going to be pervious?
No. Our, our, in our, we typically don't do pervious asphalt in New England. It tends to fail after a couple of years, it gets clogged with sand and debris just because of our New England winters. We do it sometimes on pedestrian pavements, but not for asphalt. Just our, our recommendation, and we had a discussion with Sue, our civil engineer, she agreed as well, so.
Okay.
I believe that's it. Do I have another plan?
No.
That's the plan schedule. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to note, we don't have this sheet up, but when Susan, Sue Spratt was talking earlier, the, the area where the spaces are, we're requesting 18 feet versus 18 and 1/2, was that sort of orange area up in the upper left of the, of the plan? That's, I just want to point out, because I didn't mention where it was earlier.
Do you, does any relief from 18 and 1/2 to 18?
Yes. So I would recommend adding to the list of recommended conditions waiver of Section 6.1.10 for stall depth to 18 feet.
Which number is that?
Do you have a number of parking spaces that are affected?
Kevin, do you know how many spaces are up there? Susan, how many spaces?
I want, you know, give me a second, Susan.
Yeah.
We can incorporate that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that will add clarity to it. Thank you.
Okay, so it's in here somewhere?
It isn't in, in your memo.
Oh, it's not?
No, I think what Sarah's saying is we're, we should add that as part of the proposed relief, and I think it would apply to site plan and major project special permit, both sections.
Okay, so we have to put that into vote?
We're going to give you the number in a moment as to the number of spaces, and we point out the, what the location is at. How do we find that? How do we describe that location? Northwest?
Northwest.
Northwest.
Seventy, seven, zero.
Seventy spaces in that area.
State of Washington.
And that's northwest section of the site. And it was shown on the plan as orange, sort of orange.
It's shown on the plan, that's, it doesn't need, I think, to be more specific.
That's, yeah.
All right.
Happy to take any questions, Matt Chair.
Anybody? Mr. Pachakowski?
Thanks. I did, you know, watch the video and stuff, but couldn't ask questions, obviously. So bear with me on a, on a couple. Attorney Hearn, going back to the use table, I understand what we're trying to do here is kind of replicate what we did down at the Space Center, so the applicants are going back every time a new tenant comes in, they're going back to the ZBA, because it's a hot bunch up there, and it's great. There's a lot of small businesses, I'm all for that. I do have a question, though, and if you could just bear with me, and maybe with your knowledge, on the restaurant aspect.
Yeah.
This is the only thing that I'm a little, I need some clarification on. So if someone, to open a restaurant...
I'm listening.
You've got down 20,000 square feet of food processing, I'm assuming that is, is that restaurant, or food processing, something different?
Food processing is actually different, like breweries, bakeries, people like that.
Okay, not the kitchen of a restaurant?
No.
Okay.
No, restaurants fall under retail.
Retail.
I'm looking for my use table here.
So to get a, to open a restaurant, my, and, and I'm thinking of the Space Center, because they have a brewery down there, you know, and I could see something like that going in here, and I'm concerned about hours of operation and late night, you know, people in there at late night. So who would set the hours? Is that something that the Board of Selectmen, when they get a license, would, would approve Board of, hours of operation type of thing? Depending, obviously, they'd probably have to go for a liquor license if they want, but...
Yeah. Board of Selectmen sets, they issue the CV license, the Convential License, and they can set hours. With respect to alcohol licenses, they have to allow them to stay open, I think, at least till 11:00 PM for any alcohol license.
So my, my concern is, by granting the restaurants as a by right...
Well, not by right, but by this, this permit.
By this permit?
Yeah.
But it, once it, once they get this permit, though, it, they're allowed to do it. If the permit passes, right, if they wanted to open a restaurant, what would the procedures be then?
Well, as far as this body goes, we would, you know, we would be looking for our, our retail uses.
Right.
Right now, the retail uses, we have about 30,000 square feet. We're looking for another 20,000 square feet on that.
Right. So I guess my, my, I guess this goes to a bigger thing, another discussion, another time, if we eventually, as a town, should pull restaurants out of retail use and give it its own separate. So if you wanted to open a restaurant or a brewery down there, with serving food, they have to go to the Board of Selectmen to get a license?
Yeah.
Hours of operation would be set, I mean, the only, but they couldn't deny a restaurant, right?
Well, the Selectmen, they can't deny the use from a zoning point of view, that's what we're dealing with here.
Right.
But they can choose not to license them if they have some concern that, particularly on an alcohol license, if they think it's inappropriate use, or the facilities are inappropriate, or something like that, they could, or if they had concerns about the management, or any history of the management with similar licenses, they could decline to grant.
I guess my, my concern is, I'm going to try to bring it from another way, and maybe explain myself better, is I'm good with everything else, I'm just concerned about restaurant being under the retail, which it is, I understand that, that maybe if someone wanted to open a restaurant or a microbrewery or something, that maybe that should be, that should go back to the, to the ZBA for approval. And my concern there is the neighborhood, if a restaurant opens and if they get a liquor license, they're open till 11 o'clock at night, or in traffic coming in and out of that Endicott Street, you know, late at night. The restaurant is the only thing I'm concerned about, and says, and outside seating on private property, I believe you can do that. The only time the Board of Selectmen get involved fits on a public way, if I understand myself correctly, right?
Well, right, but you have authority over outside seating.
Right, well, you're asking for it. Restaurant including service to persons standing or sitting outside the building, not a drive-in or drive-through, which we know is not.
Unless, unless you see fit to limit it. I mean, I, I will put this to you, that...
I guess the restaurant issue is, where I'm a little hung up on use, on the use table.
On the other hand, let's say somebody wants to build, put in a small sandwich shop or cafe, coffee shop, something like that.
Well, there is a little, there's a little something there.
There's like a hot dog stand.
Yeah, that little building that's...
We had that interest in a coffee shop, but because of the process, they, they went away. So this would allow us to be able to rent to a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, or something like that.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I get, you have to differentiate. I look at it, and I look at that place, and I says, you know, it's an old mill building, somebody with a little ingenuity and a little cash going in and say, you know, I could take, turn this old mill into a nice old, as we've seen in other parts of the state, you know, nice microbrew or something, you know, and I'm just concerned about hours in Endicott Street, and I'm just, you know, the restaurant part is, it's probably okay, I'm just concerned, I just need a little refresher on how we go about getting that restaurant license, and who sets the hours, and stuff like that.
They would be limited. We, we're only asking for... They would be limited. We're only asking for twenty thousand more square feet for retail uses. We're currently using about thirty thousand. So there isn't a lot of leeway there before somebody would have to come back to a.
But that could all change. We know that. That's, you know, businesses come in and out of there.
They can, yeah, and that's the question. Now, if you've got a concern about, I don't know, if your concern were about restaurants that require alcohol licenses or that seek alcohol licenses, maybe we carve out something for them because it's going to take them, the few months. What we're trying to avoid.
I don't mind a bakery, a coffee shop. I don't care about that.
If we can define this, what we're trying to avoid is a situation where somebody comes along and says, I want to rent some space. I want to open this business. Wonderful. According to the town zoning bylaw, you need a special permit, so go to the zoning board and we'll see in a few months.
I'm with you on that. I'm with you on that.
So, but an al, a restaurant with an alcohol license would necessarily, the process of getting an alcohol license takes a few months at best.
If they can get one.
Because even, even if, once it's approved by the Selectmen, it goes into the ABCC.
Right.
And they go in there and we never know how long it's going to take. It could be a couple of months. It could be several months. So if you perhaps want to carve out an exception for restaurants serving alcohol or proposing to serve alcohol, you know, under a regular, it's a section twelve license as opposed to, you know, one day license. I mean, they give out one day licenses all over the place for events and parties and different things people do. But in section twelve, whatever the, you know, consumption on premises, I think that's a section twelve license, but I'm not positive. So consumption on the premises. If you want to carve out an exception for that, Kevin, kick me if I'm wrong on this, but, you know. There would be some protection there because you could let that proceed on track with the, depending upon whether they're coming to this board or going to the zoning board. Because it also depends whether it's outside dining or drive-through or anything like that.
Yeah.
One of the boards, you could carve out an exception so that they would have to go to one of those boards at the same time they're going to the Selectmen. So they're not being held back in that case. You know, we don't run into the problem in that case that we have with all these other prospective tenants of, you've got to go get a special permit. We hope you get it. We're moving forward and we'll see you in a few months. And they go elsewhere, as some of them have already.
I guess if they're going for a liquor license, and that, that's exactly what I'm talking about, is a liquor licensed place. I'm worried about people late at night, you know, on Endicott Street. I guess if they are going for a liquor license, the Board of Selectmen pretty much has control at that point anyway because they're going to issue the license. They're gonna, they're gonna be in charge of setting the hours and things like that. So I don't know if it's moot or not to.
Well, they're not going to get a license without the Selectmen and any ABCC approving it. Yeah.
And the hours that they would also, at that point, would go over, you know, occupancy and, and hours of operation. Is food going to be served? That, you know, I mean, well, obviously, food's going to be served.
Yeah.
Department would definitely be involved.
Yeah. We, we would not, I mean, all of these uses require certificates of occupancy.
Right.
And so depending upon, you know, somebody wants to put a restaurant, even a coffee shop, they've got to get approval from the Board of Health for serving food.
Yeah, I'm with you on all that.
They've got to get the CV license with the Selectmen, and they have to get a certificate of occupancy from the building department. We're just trying to cut out the first part of, you need zoning really before you can do anything.
Yeah, I guess it's a long way to get to the, if they, my, my whole concern was an alcohol-based restaurant. And if they are seeking that, then the Board of Selectmen is pretty much gonna be the governing body of that or the authority.
Right, and, and even without a liquor license, the other Board of Health has
Yeah.
a say on how you set it up and all that too. And the Selectmen have to give them the CV license. So there, there is oversight on those. So, you know, if you, if you look at it that way, I think you might be correct that the alcohol use is not going to come into play without being checked out by a couple of boards.
So there's no need to go to another board. This is why I have, why carve it out? Why even carve it out, I think, in the long run? And then the only other comment I have, and I'm going to get flack for this, but on, on the landscape, you know, I understand you're trying to meet a number on the landscape, but these islands in the middle of parking lots that we're putting green spaces in just to meet the, I just, I'm against it. I think it's fine. You want to put landscaping around the perimeter, a mall for it, but put an island in the middle of a parking lot where snowplows can hit it and everything else just to meet the requirement, the plant to abovities, just, especially in the back end of that facility.
And who are you getting flack from? Me? I said I didn't think, I thought it was arbitrary.
If I was here last week, I would have said, get rid of those. I hate them. I hate them everywhere.
I'm not saying you're preaching to the choir, but you could have called in two weeks ago. We, we worked hard to do this and to try to make it look nice as much as we can.
I understand that.
And we're, you know, and I think the chair mentioned it the last time. We're not starting from scratch.
Yeah.
You know, this is an industrial site and has been for two hundred and fifty years in one form or another.
There's a place for them, and I don't think this is the place for those little islands in the middle of the parking lot.
You making a motion to have them all struck on the plans?
No, I'm going to let, I'm not going to go down there.
Well, I don't, I agree with you. I said this two weeks ago. I think it's, it's an industrial site. It's not shahs.
Yeah.
So give us the trees, but put them someplace else, but that's, we'll see what the flavor of the board is on that.
Anyway, that's all. Other than that, I'm, I'm good with the plan. I think what we're doing is great to, it's a mess for those, the people have to go to the ZBA and it turns away business and, and I think we're cleaning up. I just had a concern about, you know, alcohol-based restaurants.
But I think you've answered it in your own way.
I think in my own long way. I apologize to everybody for me to, it's a long way to get back to the beginning.
That's all right. Thank you, though.
Anybody else? Joe?
I was just thinking something similar, but there is contact with other boards. So you're not just slipping something in there if, if you've got to do a restaurant or a bakery or whatever you're doing, you'll have to go to one board or another, whether it be the Board of Health. So it will be, these things will be looked at. And so I, and I also do agree, I understand what you, you mean, thing you want to do here is make it easier and not cripple them when they're trying to get a new tenant in unnecessarily. So I, I understand that.
And if we exceeded the limits that we're proposing in that memo of September thirtieth and that's been put into the, you know, the memo from the planning department, if we exceed those, we'll have to come back for permission to go beyond. So let's say all of a sudden our retail uses, we've got people who want to take a combined thirty thousand square feet more than what's there now. We're only talking about increasing by twenty thousand. You've got some, there, there's protection in there that we can't just do anything we want if we exceed those limits that we have laid out in our memo and are laid out in the planning department's memo. You have to come back for modification of this decision. So you'd get another bite of the apple and we'd see how things were working.
All right, just for clarification, we have the big long buildings, then we have some freestanding buildings in the back. Those aren't, they're in the.
This covers the whole site.
Right.
This is intended.
But they're not included in our numbers for the fifty thousand. They are?
Yeah.
Okay. About the dog.
We have two hundred and sixty thousand square feet of rentable space in all the buildings.
Including the dog and the?
No, 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 they're not really a building.
Dog trailers included in that square footage.
What is?
There's two dog trailers on site. I don't think they are actually included in the square footage.
Okay, what about the woodworker guy?
That's in, that's building forty-six. That's in there.
That's included in it?
That's included. And all the actual buildings, not the trailers, are included in the square footage.
The smash'em, crash'em guy? He's in the?
They're close.
They're in it?
Yeah, that's in the square footage, but they're close.
Okay, and the building where we're taking down part of the building, but part of the building staying, is that included in it?
That is.
With left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
I just wanted to say, if you do have to come back, I hope you're asking for permission and not forgiveness.
We're not, I don't think we're asking forgiveness here either.
No, not now, but, you know, if you exceed.
We already did that with the Concom. There were some things that had been done previously. We had to get remedied. But no, in this, we're trying to be proactive on this and do what, something similar to what was done at the Space Center back in two thousand and sixteen, which has worked pretty well for them and I think helps the town too. I mean, the boards, particularly zoning board, won't be overrun every time a new tenant wants to come in, so.
Want me to let, you want to go first?
No, just one, just an FYI, the mill pond, who, who controls that?
That's part, that's part of the site and that's got a concrete floor.
It does, but I mean, so, I mean, is it, is it, you guys own it? I mean, is that part of your property?
Yes.
So you, you, you maintain it and all of that? Okay, I'm just curious. I didn't know if that was part of the waterway or anything or?
No.
You're not curious about the color?
About the what?
The color? Completely curious about the color.
Without, thank you, without opening up a can of worms, I'm just curious about the conservation's history here, Conservation Commission, what their comments were regarding the riverfront and parking and.
We got an order condition from the Conservation Commission a couple of months ago, maybe longer. That took into, and they had our plans. They, they know what, where we were proposing to put parking, what stormwater structures we were planning to put in. All of that was vetted by them. And they issued their order. Sue, Sue Sprague can probably speak to that in greater detail than I can, but is that really a question? Have they seen all this?
Well, I guess my question is just from a bird's eye view, looking at the boundary. Really, we've got the yellow dotted line and that's the no disturb area, I'm assuming?
Sue?
And what we have.
Can you take the microphone?
Sorry.
Sorry. On the plans, we see a yellow dotted line. Limit of twenty-five foot.
Twenty-five foot no.
Buffer area.
No disturb.
No disturb, and we've got repaving. We've got a lot of stuff, you know, in that area.
We, we can do some things that replace, repair, maintain existing conditions. The, you know, the no disturb generally relates to areas that not, that have not been disturbed, cannot, cannot be newly disturbed. But areas that have already been disturbed, we're allowed to make, you know, there's a, really a different set of rules for redevelopment of existing sites. You know, if this were an undeveloped piece of land, we'd be having an entirely different discussion with this board on landscaping and parking areas and all that as well as the discussion we would have had with the Conservation Commission. But Sue, is there anything more you want to add on that?
Well, what we were doing, part of the plan, is that we were restoring previously degraded riverfront with green grass all along Hawes Brook, which was a recommendation from the conservation agent when we did the initial site walk lap, I think, April of two thousand and twenty-four, that if we could look at restoring previously degraded riverfront areas, which is what we have shown on this plan in green, were previously degraded.
Is, thank you, is, is there a list of, you know, we're not going to put, you know, turf grass on the edge of the river, right? Is there?
No.
We have a, we have plant, you know, a whole schedule of?
Yeah, all of that. When, when we worked out the, the schedule of plantings, Carly Rockland, the conservation agent, was part of that discussion along with the, the planning department. I mean, she's part of that umbrella. But the Conservation Commission's decision authorized the conservation agent to work with us to develop what the approved plantings would be from the point of view of the Conservation Commission. And that plus what planning, zoning department were looking for in terms of compliance with the zoning bylaw, which is a set, set of rules, I think was coordinated.
Michael, she has her agreement.
Yeah, so what we've, what we've put together, we believe is acceptable both to Concom and hopefully to this board and is, I think it's been recommended to you favorably. But Carly's on board with that too, which means Concom's on board with it because they authorized her to make those decisions. We don't need any further vote from them on those points.
Just one other comment. The tunnel?
The tunnel?
Yeah.
The tunnel?
I mean, it's, there's, there's part of the river that's covered by a concrete slab.
That little bridge?
Yeah, it looked, it's pretty.
No, we're, we're not, we're keeping that. Do you want to go to sheet C six?
Thank you.
We're, we're keeping it, existing concrete to remain. It's part of the, it appears to be part of an old foundation from a building that was there. I don't, I could go back through my records to find out when it was removed. It sort of is like a support over Hawes Brook and we do not want to get into any type of changes to that wall that runs along Hawes Brook with that concrete slab is integrated into as part of an old foundation.
Okay, that can be left there.
It can be, but.
And they approve it to be left there.
Okay.
Yeah.
We should stop messing with that again.
Yeah, that's a hold. Okay, just curious about the, the bank itself. It's an opportunity to really make a pretty spot that could be, you know, really good for.
I think we're, we're doing, we think a lot of improvements to it. And, you know, McKenzie and High Point, Sue and Michael have been working on all of that to make that work. That and the improvements to drainage and stormwater treatment, things that never existed on that site would never require. So one of the things here is that, like going through this exercise, we are creating improvements that, you know, if we hadn't gone through this in order to help respective tenants get in, we wouldn't have to do most of this work. But we, the client, the ownership is willing to do this, improve the stormwater, improve the bank of the, the brook, improve the traffic and, and as much as environmental issues as we can. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Okay. I can open it up to questions from the audience? Anybody? Any questions? Any questions? Go ahead.
Tony, Esco, District Five, anybody, Endicott Street?
How about to the mic, Tony, sorry?
Thank you. First, I want to say that I'm thrilled to hear about the parking spaces that were removed to allow for easier access for a fire engine because that is a huge necessity down there. In, in talking about the large parking lot that will be created with over four hundred spaces, while an island might be a pain in the neck for snow plowing, large parking lots, and it's already one down there, way down on the left near the forward shelter, we get speeding. We got, we have some people that love, when they're vacant, they go down there and do their thing and we hear the motorcycles and the revving and all that down there. It happens over at Big Y too sometimes. We've had to call the cops before for the noise and it's scary. So I actually think an island and a large parking lot is a good thing. In talking about the draggy daycare, I know you talk about grandfathering it. So if it's grandfathered, then does that mean that it, that it will not expand? Because it just doesn't seem compatible with the other kind of sort of classier event venues that are being built down there or being rented. You know, there's nice parties down there and there's a photographer and I imagine the future build-out will be lovely and, you know, this, I am not against the draggy daycare or anything like that, but it just doesn't seem compatible with the whole plan. So I, I hope it doesn't get any bigger than it is. So that's one. And then I want to talk about the food processing part. So I didn't think of bakeries, for example, which is fine, but, but could that also include if they wanted, you know, a tall, you know, factory type? Because you can be sixty feet tall down there, can't you?
How, you mean to add on to the building? Are you talking like a smokestack, like the meatball factory or something?
Exactly. I hate to say it, but that's exactly what came to my mind, Jerry. So I'm just concerned that hopefully nothing that's going to produce an odor, say, in a food processing plant situation. You know, bakery sounds warm and fuzzy, but food processing can be lots of other things too. So...
I don't know where that line is. Do you know where?
Exactly.
Do we ask where that line is? I mean, meatball factory is a whole different thing.
It sure is. Thank you, Jerry.
Right? Isn't that a different category, sir?
No problem with the brewery, the bakery, the, this, the coffee shop, but, you know, we are in a limited, limited...
I'm answering back.
...food production zone down there. And it's very large down there. I, I know there's 20 acres only. I know what can be done down there.
So there's no specific definition for food processing in the bylaw? Um, I would say that this is limited, as proposed, to a maximum of 20,000 square foot, which naturally, I think, sets a limit on the types of uses that you're describing that would be more impactful. That's a fair, fairly small scale.
Yeah, so I...
Food processing, the way we see it around town, it might look like bottling hot sauces or canning jellies or things that you're not unselling. Also, that, that's the type of food processing that exists mostly in Norwood now. The exception that I can think of that's larger than that being the meatball factory. Which is certainly a lot more...
So Tony, your, your height thing was, could they put up a chimney? Is that what you're...
Well, yes, I mean, you know, besides the houses on Endicott Street, you know, we have all the condo residents. You know, there's 112 of them, I believe it is, in Endicott Woods down there. And I'm just, you know, wondering, you know, by, by not coming for the special permits anymore to the zoning board of appeals, you don't know what's happening, you know what I'm saying? So I would just hope that the owners think of that. I know they want to rent, but, you know, people aren't going to have a mini wedding at an event venue down there if there's a smokestack business too. So I hope they think globally about the property when they're planning out their spaces to, to rent. I also want to say that I'm, I'm thrilled that the brook is finally going to get some respect. It's just been a filthy horrible situation down there for decades, and I never thought when I bought my house that it would be allowed to last so long like that. So I want to commend the current owners. Home for the first time, I really, I finally feel some confidence about the development of the area, because it's been disrespected for so long. So I really don't want to say anything negative about the proposals. I'm, I'm actually just speaking out to the owners, the investors, whomever down there, that please consider that Endicott Street's an hour street, and that we're, we're doing the best we can to all be good neighbors to the businesses as well. And we just hope there's mutual respect as the development continues, because I know it's good for the property, and what's good for that piece of property in our Commerce Center is also good for the value of our homes on Endicott Street. So I, I just want to wish them well and hope that they do respect the brook and that they think globally when they develop the property in terms of what they're allowing in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And I agree, I mean, when did we put the sock around the, um, you know, the sock?
I haven't put it in a year, but I just recently put a new one.
Yeah, I mean, that's never been there. I mean, and so, again, it's going to be, there's going to be more traffic, but we don't have any runoff now. We're going to have good runoff, so, okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Mrs. Esco? Would you like to chime in, Mr. Hurn?
I want to thank Mrs. Esco for her, her comments and her commendation. And the, and I don't think it is pointed out, we're talking 20,000 feet that might be attributable to this type of use. The ownership of the Commerce Center is smart, intelligent. They, they are businessmen, and they want to, this to work, and they are sensitive to running things in a way that will not cause harm to the neighborhood. And, but we appreciate, you know, we work with, try to work with the neighbors, and I know the Escos have been there a long time. So I think, you know, I don't envision any large smokestacks. You need building permits for that stuff. You need all kinds of stuff for that, and, and I don't think we're going to have that. And it might be small stuff, a nice bakery, maybe, somebody else making something that...
Yes, we need something to eat while we're power shopping down there, okay?
I think so.
We need nourishment.
We are, and we encourage that, but I, I do want to clarify one thing. And that is, Mrs. Esco mentioned the number of parking spaces. These are not new parking spaces. We're not creating 438 new parking spaces. We're creating...
Kind of organizing them.
I think fewer than 70 in the, in the total. Sue, is that about right? Fewer than 70 in, in, in the final, final analysis here. The 438 is, we want your approval, your determination that 438 is the correct number for this site, for these uses, and not the 750 or so, and all that extra asphalt that would be required under our bylaw. So, Tony, we're not building that many new spaces. It's, it's fewer than 70 that we're building, and we're making improvements, and the improvements also, as I've said before, have to do with stormwater treatment, everything else to protect the brook in ways that it has not been protected before. So, um, but we do appreciate her comments, and, and there's been a lot of hard work gone into this so far.
A lot of hard fight.
And there's, there's more to, to, not a fight, we're, it's hard work.
Fight isn't always a bad thing.
Can I just answer that question regarding that concrete pad?
Yep.
Between the years of 1957 and 1969, those buildings were removed. So there were existing structures there between 57 and 69. But in the aerial photo of 1969, they were removed with that concrete pad as that we're retaining, that we don't want to...
The concern is, I think, that if you take that pad out, you put at risk the...
We continue to make a problem with Hawes Brook.
Yeah.
Would we put a planter on it?
Sure.
A planter?
Who's that, Joe?
Hey.
Okay.
You want a planter on it?
Or a picnic table?
Well, wait, 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 wait. As your lawyer. A picnic table, we want to be somebody falling off of that.
What?
No, I don't think we want, I don't think we want to encourage people out there that might fall.
You don't want a picnic table, because people will fall off the thing.
And we'll fish them out.
How about a big planter? Okay.
You put a couple of planters in, yeah.
Okay.
They're animate, but not that...
Something bigger than we get a job lot? Kidding?
Will be reasonable.
Is that a formal condition?
Should we make, would you like to make that a formal condition?
I don't know if it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary.
You know, you'd rather, you'd rather make it a formal condition than have me come down there, right? No, okay, we don't need to make it a formal condition. My other question was, the trails thing, we took it out, correct?
It's not part of it. We, but Kevin has...
You met with Joe?
I talked with Joe Greeley last week, and I walked through everything, and I told him that we're amenable to whatever, providing that he gives us a plan and what they want to do. And we identified as a couple of different pathways, and I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
And again, as his lawyer, I'll say, when we're amenable to whatever, it's something to the usual requirements and liability and all that. It's... The owner would, would not be happy if I, if I didn't make those statements.
I, I understand that.
We're certainly open to talking with them about what they're looking for. We haven't known until we talked with Joe recently.
Joe said he talked to you, and everything's great, and I know people in the audience might be interested in that, because that's great.
Yeah, if we can do that, we're, we're open to it.
No other questions from the audience? Are you done, Mr. Hurn?
I'm just here to answer questions at this point.
Anybody else on the board? Ernie, you're good?
I'm good.
Joe?
I'm good.
I'm good, as long as you're aware of these, the list of waivers that we...
In the memo?
In the memo.
Yeah, we saw that, yeah.
And then we added, did we add one?
Yes.
A waiver of 6.1.10 to waive the stall depth to 18 feet for 70 spaces in the northwest section of the section. Got that written down as an addition.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah.
So these conditions, right? Everybody's comfortable with that?
Can I look at them one more time? Did I flag something here? I want to make sure I'm not missing it.
So you need to take three motions. The first motion is a motion to waive application requirements for site plan approval or major project special permits. So the applicants requested a waiver of your requirement to submit an architectural plan, since this, these are existing buildings and not proposed new construction, and then also a traffic impact analysis, which, again, the board typically requires for new development. So your first motion would be on those requests.
Do you want us to, do you want us to do it and vote, and then you can tell us what the second one is?
A simple majority required for that.
I would love that.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to waive the following requirements for site plan approval and major project special permits, to waive architectural plan, which includes ground floor plan and architectural elevations of all proposed buildings and color rendering, signs and exterior lighting with accompanying materials describing these elements, and a traffic impact analysis.
Okay. Second from Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, number two?
So the second motion would be to approve the application for site plan review based on site plan submitted dated 9/29/25, subject to the following design waivers and special conditions. Waiver of section 6.1.3, parking scheduled minimum requirements. The second is waiver section 6.4.4, parking area plantings. And I'm just going over these, because you have this in writing in front of you.
Yep.
The third waiver is 6.3.1.1 buffers. The new one we've added in is waiver 6.1.10, stall depth to 18 feet. And then condition four would be subject to the square footage restrictions in the chart that was provided to you. And then the uses, retail for not more than 25,000 square feet, showroom for building supplies, restaurant, including service to persons standing or sitting outside the building, but not driving or drive-through, indoor recreation, business or agency office, bank, or other monetary institution, personal or consumer services, fitness centers, and food processing, bottling, or packaging. Pedestrian protection, the bollards being provided in the front of the identified buildings. Location of dumpster shall be shown along with the dumpster enclosure on a plan to be submitted prior to commencement of work. An ADA compliant curb cut provided at the end of the Endicott Street sidewalk where it meets the exit road around the pond, and standard condition, all applicable state local permits shall be applied for emergency.
Public hearing? We're voting here.
Yes, so you also have to close the public hearing.
Right.
Oh, before I just...
When you're ready, so like...
Oh, okay. And I do have, I do have a, a use question. And I see Sleckman Plasko is in the audience, so he may weigh, help me on this one. Everything now is, I'm up in Maine all the time, there are marijuana places everywhere. And I know that we have a, for those on the committee, we have a medical marijuana zone in Norwood. If that was to, if the, if we were to town, open that up to sale of marijuana, which is, there's been talk or processing, the processing of marijuana would, would, I'm assuming we would have a separate, it would not fall under one of these use categories.
It's not allowed anywhere, except by special permit. I'm referring to in the use table under F service establishments, number 11.
Separate, it's a separate use. Not specified, so a grow house wouldn't be allowed. Fine, thank you. I just want to get, make that clear. It would be allowed though on Endicott Street? Is that also an Endicott?
Number 14.
Do we need to close the public hearing? We already took a vote.
When you're, when you're ready.
When you're ready.
But we already did take a vote.
Yeah, we took one vote.
No, you just took the vote to approve application waivers.
Oh, that, and that didn't, I got you. Madam Chair?
But before you move to the other two, you want to...
Close the public hearing, okay.
But, but I, I would ask clarification on one thing when, um... When Ms. Dixon was reading the motion, or, you know, what the waivers, what the conditions, what the relief issues were here, and listed under number four, subject to the square footage restriction specified in condition number five, the following issues shall be permitted. I didn't hear public assembly. We list them in number four.
Number five.
It said number five, but, um...
Public assembly is not a specific zoning use.
Right.
It's the category by which you've lumped some of those uses together for the maximum square footage, so it's worded in such a way to reflect that.
I just wouldn't want it run in problem that we call out A, B, A through H, none of which refers to public assembly.
Because that's not a specific zoning usage. That's a category of uses.
If, if, if you're okay with that, that's fine. We do, yeah, we have this heading of retail uses and places of assembly, and we've never really defined those very well. Okay, then, if you're all right, yeah, I think we're clear on that.
So it's in here under five, public assembly, 40,000 square feet.
Right, whatever, whatever that means.
You're comfortable with that? Okay, and whatever that means. Okay, so you're covered.
Yeah, we're all good with that.
Okay. So we're going to take the second...
And that would apply to both, and then we've already talked about the waiver on, on section 6.1.10, I think it was. That will be in both sets of motions, and...
At 1.10.
That's the 18, 18-foot, 18-foot depth versus 18 and a half.
Yep.
These suggested conditions would be in both motions. It would be the same motion for the major project special permit and the site plan, but you do have to take separate votes.
We have to take separate votes. Okay, so we're voting on the second one, site plan.
If you're ready to close the public hearing, you would need to do that first.
I'd like to make that motion. Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to vote on the second motion. Correct?
Major, the site plan review.
Site, second, which is site plan review. And Sarah's already read it. Do you want to belabor it, or we're good? Everybody comfortable on the board with what you're voting on?
Yes, what we just discussed.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application for site plan review based on the site plan, uh...
And the conditions?
The conditions just previously listed, one through nine, including the 18-foot stall length condition we spoke of.
Yeah, is, is the 18-foot going to be number 10 on it? Because we've got nine, correct? Okay, or you can put it in, whatever. So that is an added on. You made the motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, and number three, Sarah?
Wish I could move that closer.
Joe? Number three?
The major project special permit, subject to the same conditions.
As number two. Okay. Motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve that major permit.
Brian, motion?
With the conditions as recited explicitly by Sarah.
Here, one, two, ten. We have a second?
Second.
On the motion, do we have to spell out the date of the plan referencing? No.
That's the one that she's putting in front of us, right?
9/29 is the last plan of record.
Okay, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We love, we love Wensmore.
I love Wensmore. Okay. All right, on the, uh... Approval of minutes, and I have one thing after that. Oh, 699 Washington Street. Holy moly. Sorry.
We're still here.
You're still here?
We're still here.
Okay. Sorry.
Am I okay to come up?
You are. Please do.
Hi, my name's Sean Murphy, representing my father, James Murphy, at 699 Washington Street in Norwood Center. We are just coming back from an amendment on an approved plan, I think it was February of this year, that was approved. At that time, we were going through the process of getting designated historical, which went through historical credits, et cetera. That was a... That was a pretty long process with Epsilon Associates who represented us to go through that process. And ultimately, we were denied historical designation because we were not maintaining the thirty-foot ceilings in the main lobby. So despite all the preservation on the exterior of the building, we're denied on the interior of the building. So with that said, we are now proposing putting in three windows, which are on the sides of the building. I think you have, do you have the memo I wrote to the building department and Sarah? There's a picture of that, so small windows on the, on either side of the building, three in total, which would open up a quote-unquote legitimate bedroom. So one of the units was a studio with open space that can now be used as a two-bedroom with the windows. And on the other side of the building was a one-bedroom plus den, that we would convert the den to a bedroom with the window. So in total, we would take two units, one was a one-bedroom, make it a two-bedroom. One was a studio, make it a two-bedroom. Now, the impact of that would be the parking, and the parking with that proposal would go from ten and a half spaces to eleven and a half spaces.
So just could you, how many, how many bedrooms did we have on, on the approved one?
Thirteen bedrooms, so we go from thirteen to fifteen. No, you got that right?
So how many, how many units?
Yeah, so there was five two-bedrooms and three one-bedrooms. Studio included in that.
Okay, so that's a total of eight units.
Yep, so now there's seven two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom. Still eight units.
And that adds one parking spot.
One parking spot.
And you're staying with that drive-thru?
Yes.
Hate the drive-thru. So that's what you're asking for?
So that, that's one of the changes. The other change, so when we, we now have demoed the building, it kind of shows itself, you get a better idea of the structure and, and how things are carried, as far as beams, flooring, et cetera. That allowed us to shift a bathroom in the basement closer to the center of the building, where the stairwells come down. I think a little bit more convenient for the commercial space, and it freed up roughly five hundred square feet in the basement. So slight reconfiguration of the basement that would increase the basement space roughly five hundred square feet.
And what are we putting in the basement?
Commercial space. We don't have a ton of it.
Is there something in the historic, they wouldn't give you, give it to you because you can't see the dome? Is there something between the whole enchilada and something about caping the outside conforming to, kind of like we did with the velvet illusion?
We were denied on the lobby. They wanted the entire lobby to be preserved with the thirty-foot ceilings, which didn't make sense because it was a steel structure that dropped the ceiling to ten feet anyways, so.
Was that put in on the bank?
That was probably put in at least thirty years ago, if not longer.
Okay. I have some questions, but I'm gonna let the, I'm gonna let the board have at it. Joe?
I just have some questions on the, on the parking as it's laid out, and you're gonna have the the tenants, actually the residents. They're gonna need how many spaces?
Sixty, sorry, on the new or the existing?
Give me both.
Okay, ten and a half versus eleven and a half.
Okay, which is a half, is, what does that mean? They only can only have a motorcycle?
Eleven and twelve.
Have a bicycle?
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve.
Yeah. And we have sixteen onsite spaces.
Sixteen onsite where twelve is required.
Yes, if we make the change.
By the bedrooms?
Yes.
By bedroom count, you require him twelve.
On the request and change.
Correct.
And on the, when, when someone comes in, some of those other spaces are available. Is that gonna be, if someone comes in for the retail or, or the businesses, being able to come in and park there, is that?
Yeah, so we, we're gonna have to come up with a game plan as far as what are designated as residential and what we designate as commercial. It makes the most sense when you pull into the driveway that the, so it would be sixteen, so twelve, four of the spaces are designated as the commercial. And then on the back of the building, up against the wall, would be residential.
And do you have a plan as to designate those and kind of keep retail folks out? You know, I, obviously someone might, they might be driving off to work and it's open for the, for the day. But if they're just out for an errand, they come back and someone's in this space, they're not gonna be happy, so.
Yeah, no, there would be toe signs, there'd be signs that designate the, the specific spaces.
And when they leave, is there an exit on the side street, on Day Street, or not?
Same exit as existing.
So you still use that? And?
So it's a, kind of if you think of the parking lot, it's a one-way loop around the building.
Right, and they, and if they go past, they can also go past that, now it's back out into Washington Street. There's still an exit there too?
The exit on Washington Street is an entrance, so it's, the, the curb cut on Washington Street is an entrance into the right side of the building.
Okay, on the other side, they, because they used to have the drive-in, right?
Correct.
On the other side, and they used to be able to come out that way, no?
You could come out, yes, you can exit that way, you can't go in that way.
No, I understand that.
There were two cuts on Day Street.
Right. Oh, so, oh, so there's two cuts on.
Correct.
Okay, I was thinking.
So those are, those are exits, there's only one entrance off of Washington.
Okay. I was looking and not seeing, I, I was thinking it was coming out on Washington Street, but it's not. All right, so as far as, I don't know, as far as having enough spaces, there is a requirement to have some for the retail or?
Yeah, so the ground floor tenant, so first floor tenant, two hundred, every, for every two hundred fifty square feet requires a spot on the ground floor.
And so.
In the basement structure, every four hundred square feet.
So what have you figured out that you need?
So there's twenty-four required, we have twenty-four. Because you can include the spaces on the street that are adjacent to your building. So there's sixteen onsite, eight offsite.
So you've got three out, three out in the front and Washington Street.
There's four out in Washington.
There's four.
Four on Day Street.
And on Day Street, are they on that, your side of the street?
They're on the opposite side of the street, it's a one-way.
I guess the question is, does that count towards yours?
It was.
It was, I wonder if it was.
Okay. I'm fine with the, the new windows. But I'll pass on to anyone else who's got a comment on it?
Anybody?
Yeah, the.
Ernie?
Yeah, just to follow up with Joe. On the, I made a question for Sarah on, on the downtown overlay. I mean, I'm looking at, if he has seven, is the, consider, you're gonna have seven two-bedrooms?
Seven two-bedrooms.
Okay, so that's fourteen parking spaces?
It's a, it's a space and a half for two bedrooms, not two.
Space and a half, okay, all right, okay, so that's, okay, that's.
The downtown district has a different parking.
That's right, that's my, was my question if, if the down, if we, the downtown has a difference on the space and a half.
Parking, the parking calculation for the central business district is the one and a half for a two-bedroom. And then additionally, it allows for the parking requirements to serve the commercial. So there's the residential parking requirements and the commercial requirements. The commercial requirements are allowed to be met by using the on-street parking. So the onsite parking that's being proposed is for residential and then a little bit of commercial.
Happen to have enough.
But the rest of the commercial would be utilizing the street parking. All of the residential parking would be served by spots.
So residential parking, you're covered.
Yes.
No problem there.
With, plus up.
And the commercial would be on the street, just like if they were going to get their hair cut down the street?
Yeah, because I mean, all of downtown Norwood.
I mean, to say you have four on Washington Street, you could say you have twenty-five on Washington Street, so hold, you have.
No, it's gotta be in front of your building.
It's gotta be in front of your building.
Yes.
You have four there or three?
Four.
Four.
I thought it was three on Washington and five.
Do you have the?
I thought it was three and five also.
Looks like three.
Three before the cut.
Three and five, it might be.
It was three and five.
Yeah, it might be three and five.
And, and we have, we've already approved, in February, we gave you twenty-four spaces.
Correct.
And you're, so you're really not asking for any increase in parking. You're just asking for.
Yeah, we had the, the spa, we had twenty-three back in, so total parking requirement was twenty-three back in February.
Right, but you had the ability to go to, you had the ability to go to twenty-four.
Yes.
In February, so we can't, we're not gonna take that away from you.
Thank you.
And I, I would, as far as commercial, I look at that, as long as, personally, you've got your tenants covered. You're not asking your tenants to, to use public parking spaces, you're not asking your tenants to go to municipal lives, anything else.
Residential tenants.
Residential tenants, yes. Commercial tenants would be just like if I was going uptown and I wanted to go to get my, get my hair cut, which I, I, I do often.
We don't need any parking spots.
You know, I, I park, I just find a place to park and I park. You know, you luckily, now somebody could.
We're fortunate to have.
You've got, you've got three spaces in front of your building, but they're not legally yours.
Correct.
So it's the, somebody.
Under the overlay district.
Under the overlay district, yeah, so I'm with you on that. I think that you know, as, as far as downtown parking, that's a bigger question for people smarter than us. If they ever want to, you know, revisit that, that's fine, but as long, personally, you've got your residents covered.
Correct.
You're not asking them to use any municipal, any public spaces.
Nope.
And as far as commercial business, like any other commercial business on Washington Street, you're on your own. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be like that, but find a place to park. So I'm good with it. As far as the windows, I'm fine with it. Sorry about you didn't get your.
Yes, I was not expecting the verdict to be held, held level on the. Well, it's, again, there was a angle iron drops in, not just a aluminum drop, it was angle iron dropped down to ten feet.
Yeah.
Or ten foot, I, it just made no sense, but not my decision.
Yep. I still like the, the project and good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You got anything? Anybody?
It's a shame about the historical designation, and I have everything I could say.
With that said, the three windows are a fairly minor addition to it, where I think it fits in pretty well with the rest of the layout of the elevations, so.
They have to be big enough for egress though, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, but it all has to be, to build and go, correct, correct.
I'm fine with all of them.
Just curious about the drive-thru.
Yes.
What's happening with it, or is it, is it just staying or?
Yeah, we're, we're keeping it for the potential of a tenant. I think, you know, Norwood commercial space is, is challenging, and we don't want to put further limitations on our ability to find a strong tenant that will be there for a long-term basis.
No, I like, I just look forward to a finished building.
Me too.
You know, it's a, it's a good-looking building, so.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
So Sarah, oh, sorry, let me just ask one question on that. They get the drive-thru, they get to keep it unless they give it away, correct? So the drive-thru is, if all of a sudden he gets a tenant that wants the drive-thru, he doesn't have to come back to us, he has the drive-thru. Is it grandfather, does it stay with the bank forever unless you get rid of it? Okay.
Because.
Joe?
I just wanted to say, I was out walking, I saw you working out there, right, almost as soon as you came to us last time. And it's been great to see some movement on that building. It doesn't always happen like that. We've got a lot of projects that are out there and they, people haven't started on it. I'm glad to see you start right on it.
Yeah, we're, we got a permit to move forward, so we're, well, obviously based on this, we'll have to go back to Gary with the, with the amendments. Yeah, it's nice to start breaking ground, so to speak.
You said? Ernie, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I have an issue with the windows.
Okay.
I'm not gonna live in your apartments, and one of the things we asked for was unreason, minimize unreasonable departure from the character material and scale of the building. No, is that, yes. So how are you going to match the windows to what was there? I know the back of the building that they, that's an addition in, what, the forties?
About fifty-seven, I believe.
Okay, so but you're not, you're putting them in the granite part of the building?
Actually, no, it's made to look like granite.
Okay, how thick is the wall? How thick are the walls?
It's a four-layer brick with a veneer.
Okay, so how thick are they?
They're in some parts fourteen inches, in that specific location, I think it's sixteen inches.
All right, so I would like to ask as a condition that you match the windows that are there with what do you call the bottom, the sill? Because they have, whatever the material is, they have granite sills on the other windows.
No, they're not.
Well, they've got a sill, correct? In the drawing, it looks like they've got.
I spent so much time there, I should know, but I can't think of it off the top of my head.
But what I'm getting at is I.
All the windows will match, so we, the idea is for those to fit in with the, the schematic and elevation as if they were there the whole time.
So they're, you're gonna match the ones that are there?
They're gonna all, they're all gonna match. In that older version of the bank, the original version of the bank, they're all gonna match.
Okay, and the.
They're all gonna match around the whole building, but specifically, yes.
They will match?
Yes.
And the ones that are there now are metal?
The ones that are there now, they're coming out. We're replacing those by code, we need, by stretch code, we have to have triple paint. Specific European windows.
They're gonna have any millions, are they gonna look?
They're gonna, they're gonna be designed to look like they do now, but the, the ones that are there now are single paint, they don't open, they're, they're just, it's purely aesthetic, it's not functioning, they don't function. It's a big.
I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. However, I would like the bank to look, the bank was supposed to look, that's what we.
That's what we're trying to accomplish as well.
Okay, so we're not gonna put in smaller windows, we're not gonna have plastic replacement windows?
No, these are, by, with the stretch code, we have to go triple paint. There are these European triple paint windows that are.
So, and we'll match the architecture on the, on the ones that are already existing?
The ones that are already existing are coming out. They're being replaced with ones that mimic what's existing.
Okay.
That's what I think.
So the one, yes, but the one you're adding, what's.
Same schematic as the rest of them.
Right, because in the drawing, it doesn't look like you're putting a ledge underneath the new one. But as I always say with these drawings, I could be reading them wrong. The one over the drive-thru.
Mm-hmm.
I think. Is that the drive-thru?
Yeah, I see where you, I see where you, I, to be honest, I I'd like to go out there and make sure they all have sills.
Yeah, the old part doesn't, the new one, so over the drive-thru, so the one with the dotted is the new one, or is that the existing one?
Where the red arrow is pointing to is the, the add-on windows that we're referring to. So there's one, if you're looking at the drive-thru, there's one to the right on the second floor. And if you're looking at the driveway side, the perks side.
Yeah.
There's one on either side of the columns that are being added. That will mimic the ones that are already existing to the right of that.
Are these doors that, are these doors on the side of perks? That's why I hate these things. These, with the stairway going down, you know.
The handicap ramp in the stairway?
No. Yes, that's the handicap ramp stairway, right there?
That's the back of it.
That's on the back.
Which one?
That's why I want to come and look at the site.
This is the back of the building. You're welcome to come.
I know, I've been.
Would love to have you.
So these are.
These are the back of the building, so this is an existing stairwell down to get into the first floor of the building.
Okay, so these are there.
The way the gray changes because of the building.
So these.
This is a new window.
Okay. This is a new window.
Mm-hmm.
They're not gonna be smaller? This is perks over here?
No, this is the drive-thru. If you go to the, the perks will kind of.
It's on the last page. On the last. It's on the last page. On the last page.
There you go. So these are the, the two proposed windows on this side, these are the existing windows.
So they're gonna be the same size?
Mm-hmm, same, same header.
This is what I'm questioning here.
Right. And that, you know, I don't know if that's a detail.
And that's not in the drawing. I know, but I always run into this. Well, it wasn't in the drawing, so we didn't have to do it. Well.
I, I, you, that's a great.
I won't get agreement here, but I'm a purist, and I'm not gonna live there, but I would like that building to look, I, I love that building.
Devil's in the detail. I didn't pick up on it, and I can't, for the life of me, recall it, even though I'm there almost every day. I just can't remember if there's a sill on those windows.
We should honor Mr. Tilton and make sure this building looks.
That's our goal. That, that has always been our goal since.
So can I put that in the decision?
Would you like to try to word?
These three windows on that?
That all the windows match. You know, you're gonna replace them with, why do they have a mullions or, they've got metal crisscrosses or something, right?
Window grids?
Are they called grids when they're old? So you're gonna, you're gonna put grids in them? We're not getting.
Mullions.
Eight over eight or something?
Mullions is what two windows get put together with, this, the mullion.
You're talking about those?
Right, the design, the architecture of the windows.
The grill, the grill work, I think is what.
Okay, you wanna call it grills?
The windows are designed to mimic what is in there now.
Okay, so we can put that in the?
The construction of those windows with mullion, I, like, we haven't ordered the windows yet, so I don't know, because these are large openings.
Right.
I'm not exactly sure how the construction of those windows are, but the intent in the design, what we're trying to do is to mimic the windows that are in there.
Okay, so let me, let me do this. If they come to you and say, we can't mimic those windows, we're going to give you those.
So the company that we're using, again, it's this European three-paint, three-paint window, every window they make is custom to the hole they put it in. They don't have a, it's not like Anderson where they have a 36-inch window.
You make it fit.
This is what it is, this is.
Okay, that's my concern.
These are, every single window they make out of this company is a custom window to the hole that it goes in.
Okay, so we're gonna stay with the, to minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of building, of the building, correct?
Yes, we want to because this building, the construction of this building is, is beefy. I don't wanna open new holes, I don't need to, because I don't wanna have to structurally support new holes that aren't already there. So the intent is to use the existing openings that exist in the building.
Okay, okay. So we're asking for a modification to our previous plan to add how many windows?
Three.
And one parking spot.
He's not adding any parking.
It's always been the same.
Oh, you're changing the configuration.
All he's asking for is the modification.
Okay, and I'm going with 10.5.11, number eight in the book, that we wanna minimize unreasonable, it got repeated again, but you're going to, okay.
Yeah, we're on the same page with that.
Okay, and I would like you to clarify, because there's been all kinds of stuff flying around, that you're going to be using the municipal lot on Day Street for parking.
We don't need a municipal lot.
I understand that, I'm just saying that's been flying around, and we are not doing that. I'm just clarifying.
I, this is the first.
I'm clarifying for out there and.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't, what we have onsite and on-street parking satisfies the parking of the building.
Okay. We're not using any municipal lots?
Not required.
Okay. I, I know that, I'm just reiterating that because we've been, that's been flying all over everywhere.
Okay.
Okay, and you can approve this anyway. So we're, all we're changing are three windows from the previous approved plan, correct?
Let me detail, a reconfiguration of the existing basement, which moves the bathroom from the front right corner to more central location to the stairwell and elevator level.
Okay.
The three windows, and on unit one, which is second floor, oh, sorry, unit two, which is second floor, middle of the building, not the townhouses, not the front, in the middle of the building, there are 20-foot story ceilings there, and we thought it would be a shame to not kinda break the unit up a little with a mezzanine loft. So those were the three changes to the building, which I know.
Windows are the trigger for the plan or the modification.
Right, I know, but I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't get into the interiors.
Right.
Right, I just want.
Yeah, I don't.
I want everything out, so everyone knows.
Right, it's not a plan, it has nothing to do with this. What are we gonna do about the holes that the Bank of Austin put in the columns? How are you gonna fix that?
I was gonna make it like a monument for my father for all the hard work he's done in 50 years.
I think a bust of his face right in those holes.
Where did you guys land on that condition? Sorry to be a pain.
That's all right.
Something you wanna move forward with, or we need to craft a thing if you want to do that.
Yes.
That's weird.
The condition of?
About.
Staying with 10.5.
Historically accurate replicas or matching architectural trim or, I don't know.
To match existing as the building was built.
Yeah, the intent, so intent is to mimic the existing design or aesthetic of the windows that are in the hole.
You don't like that, I can touch it like that.
No, no, I'm just thinking. So new windows will be historically accurate replicas to match existing windows.
That's tricky language when you get it historically.
Yes.
Right.
The intent is to.
Not my condition, I'm, I'm, I took the man's word that he's gonna mimic, just he can, what was there. I understand window business, and they can come up, they can do all kinds of things today, and I'm sure it will, it will mimic what was there. I don't know if we need a condition, but if the chairman would like to put a condition in, then that's our prerogative.
I would, I would like to put a condition.
But I would not start going historical and.
Mimic. You comfortable with mimic? You comfortable with mimic?
Mimic, yes.
New windows will match?
As best as.
To the extent possible.
To the extent possible, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like taking a, a.
The intent of what we're doing.
Taking out casement windows and putting in double humps.
We're on the same page, I think.
I understand that, I could be dead in two days, and I'm, I, I know you're good for your word, but it's easier to have it specific. I don't wanna be ambiguous.
Yeah, I just don't wanna get too specific on his, like, that, that can get tricky.
Very tricky.
New windows will match existing windows upon replacement?
To the best of, to the best of our ability.
That's, that's right.
And if you can't get anywhere close, we have to.
Well, I think we, again, we're kinda pigeon to this company, because we need, by code, we need a triple paint window. This is a company that has it. They custom make their, I think it's, I don't think it's gonna be an issue whatsoever. I just don't wanna get caught in a.
It's a pretty straightforward tactic.
I don't wanna get caught between a rock and a hard place.
It's, it's gonna look great. It's gonna look great.
New windows will match existing windows upon replacement to the extent reasonably possible.
I like that. Perfect.
Instead reasonably possible, okay. I'd like.
Four corners.
Come on, let's not, let's not throw Mr. Tilton under the bus again, okay?
Are you looking through a motion?
All right, is that, is that all I can get? That's, I'll take that. Okay, I got it, they're not.
This is your, this is your circus.
Okay, so we ran into this before, where we weren't specific enough, and then we got something that we didn't want. So we're gonna put in that, to match what is existing.
Which is on the plans, by the way.
I, I, I know. And I just wanna be specific, no ambiguity here.
I think he's made it pretty clear what his intentions are.
And if he can't get that, if he can't, if they say, oh, we can't do anything close, does he have to come back to us and say, we're going with a completely different window? If he goes with something completely different, does he have to come back?
This is the problem when you put a condition in like this.
Yeah.
Then yes, right?
Okay.
If they don't match the existing windows.
Okay.
And now we become, we become the window police.
I, I understand, Ernie, but this is a 100-year-old building.
I understand that.
You can't, you're not gonna get a second bite at this apple.
He's gonna get one.
And he's a man of honor.
Right.
So if he can't get anything close, he's gonna come back to us and say, I can't get anything close, how about this? We're not unreasonable. We just don't want it to look.
You wanna make it that condition, you have that prerogative.
I do.
I just.
And we're not unreasonable.
I, I don't think these windows are, are that difficult for somebody to reproduce, that he's gonna have an issue with something.
Yeah, I, I'm not suspecting it.
All right, then, then it'll be a moot point. Then we'll have a condition that we don't even need. But if we do, we've got it, okay? All right, so that's my.
Who is the defining, am I checking in with somebody? How does that work?
The building convention or is the zoning enterprise?
No, and if you have.
So he has to see the window.
Beach street.
If you, I didn't take out Walter Tilton's windows in his house, I don't think he's doing it in his bank.
Wasn't it Willett's Bank?
It's not, who's?
Wasn't it Willett's Bank?
No, Walter Tilton built the Bank of, whatever it was, okay. Yes, am I correct on that, historic ladies?
Yes.
Okay, so that's my only, okay?
In addition to the standard conditions that you currently have.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I got? Everybody's all in the right?
Motion to approve under those conditions?
Okay.
Second.
Approve in a second with the one condition of, we're gonna make them historically accurate.
We got it.
I'm just gonna keep nagging, okay? So wait, we got a few trees, you know, right, ladies? We just gotta keep banging our heads against a wall. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
You're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm wanting to know, it's a half parking space. Did I hear that correctly at one point during my.
It's how they do the numbers. There was no other way to do it but the numbers. Same thing.
It was rounded up.
So by making half-spaces, you're?
There's no half-space. It was rounded up to the next digit.
Oh, all right, okay.
Sorry, I didn't take questions from her.
I'll, I'm happy to answer, I'm happy to say.
Now, where are we? I didn't open it up to questions, sorry. Sorry. Can I, I can't take questions, sorry, you got, we voted on it. Sorry. Somebody should've yelled at me. I'm getting tired.
But if you have a question for me, zone back.
There was no public hearing.
There was no.
Public minutes?
Wasn't this supposed to be a public hearing?
No.
Site plan review.
No, it's review from a previous, it's a modification of the previous plan that we approved a month ago?
February.
Two months ago?
Many months ago.
In the spring. It was a, a minor modification.
I'd like to point out something that maybe somewhat important. He said that he wasn't considering the Day Street lot, and that this is the first he's heard of it, yet he brought it up in his letter to Gary and Sarah dated November 9th, 2025, and it says that the new school log on Day Street is approximately 300 to 350 feet.
Right, but that was just.
And therefore qualifies as a valid off-street parking standard.
It does qualify, but he wasn't asking to use those, he didn't have to, because he could stay onsite with his residential and his commercial, he can, he's covered with, correct me if I'm wrong, jumper aid and hit me over the head, he could use this parking spot on day and in front of his building. So, and with overflow, the statement is, we do have a lot, and Ernie always makes a point, if you go to South Shore Plaza, you're parking a whole hell of a lot further away than you are.
Oh, I know.
So he was pointing out that he's gonna have commercial, and residents that are welcome to use those lots, but he didn't use those in order to get our permission for parking because he stayed in his little box.
But the point is that he had it in his letter, and I just wanna make sure that that's not where his intent is, because he had it in his letter that that was where his intent was.
No, his intent was.
He said tonight, sorry, I don't know if you heard.
Yeah.
Right, I understand that, but he's, there's no condition, anything, his parking is, is onsite, his residence parking is onsite, and the commercial is not on, he has one, two spaces on his site for commercial and the street parking.
Right.
But his residents that live there, they will be parking on his property. He has no intention of asking the town for his residents to park in a municipal parking lot.
Yeah, that's right.
I think where that came from, Ernie, was remember when this first started a while ago, it was.
People reading social media.
No, no, it was also that we had.
Can you move on?
Okay, all right.
This is ridiculous.
Okay, all right, we have to, we have to vote on our minutes. Meeting minutes from, I've lost my schedule, you got a schedule?